I would remind you, one of my heroes, I didn't understand it at the time I lived through it, but Rosa Parks died five years ago today. She was a little black woman that refused to be seated at the back of the bus. She changed the world. Sometimes our acts of protest are extraordinarily meaningful, and they change the world, but we have to have some distance to really appreciate what a single act of bravery can be. I don't know that you have any acts of bravery to do tonight, but my prayer for Heavenly Father would be that these who we trusted our city to would be driven by this sense of great morality and the great honor that we bestow upon them, that we would trust them with things so precious as, now that they'll sound mundane, but they're not, streets and parks and the economy and they help to shape what we believe to be a good place, a place that we've chosen to live and to play and to worship. Let me just pray, Father, that you'd guide their every decision, that you'd guide their tongue, that you'd guide their thoughts, and in the midst of all that, they would have some semblance of knowledge that they have the opportunity to change the world, just a little bit of it at a time. So, guide their every move, Father, and cause them to know that we bestow on this great treasure of autonomy, of self-governance, and we're grateful for the work that they do. Guide them and bless them, we pray, in the name of the Christ. Amen.
Okay, next on my agenda is approval of agenda.
Yes, please, the board, I have three items to amend the agenda this evening. The first item is we need to pull the first reading of Bill 11-51, the annual ordinance, and I'd like to place that on the November 14th agenda. The second item is we need to pull from the table agenda and add Bill 11-21, which is the VERP, and that will be introduced by Alderman Schaefer, and that should be placed at the bottom of the ordinances. And the last item is we need to pull all executive sessions except for legal, 610-021, those are all the changes that I have this evening. And it would please the board, I'd also like to give a little bit further explanation as to when an item you see on the agenda where it says it's introduced by Alderman. Basically, those items are rotated amongst the boards. They're based upon the boards that the Alderman actually represent or are speaking to, and we just try to rotate it, it's kind of just like a wheel. There may be no particular support or interest against a bill, it just happens to be where the roulette falls that evening. So, in this situation, the VERP falls under Alderman Schaefer's introduction.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda, approve the amended agenda? Separate, in separate motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Would you like to make a motion to remove Bill 11-21 and put it on the November 14th meeting? Okay. I have a motion from Auburn West to remove Bill 11-21 from the agenda and place it on the November 14th meeting. Do I have a second?
Sorry.
Second, Alderman Schaefer. Any discussion on that motion?
It's a resolution.
Will, any discussion on that one then?
Yeah, it is a resolution.
Okay. All in favor of the motion, please say aye. All opposed, say aye. Same sign. Okay, next, I have a motion to remove Resolution R. 11-21, putting it back on the agenda this evening. I have a motion from Auburn Headley to remove Resolution R. 11-21 from table, placing it back on the agenda this evening. Do I have a second?
Sorry.
Second, Alderman Schaefer. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All oppose, same sign. Portion is amended. And then finally, do I have a motion to remove, it's legal actions, cause of action litigation under executive session?
Actually, Mayor, that's the one item that you're going to keep on the agenda, the F-3.
Oh, that's the one we're keeping, remove all the rest of the three?
That's the one you're keeping. The other three, print two, print three, and print 13 will all be removed.
Okay, I have a motion to remove the leasing purchase sale of real estate, hiring, firing, and individually identifiable personal records from the agenda under executive session. Questions made, all, Alderman Scully. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Headley. Any discussion?
So, we're going to announce to everyone when we're interested in purchasing property?
No, that's just saying that if we, when we go into executive session tonight, we're only going into executive session for legal actions.
Okay.
When we go into executive session, we're not going in for the last three.
Okay. Tonight, we're going into executive session?
If the board so chooses. But if we did, we'll not be for the other three, the last three, just for legal actions. Okay, any additional discussion? Okay. Well, I got to bring it up.
To refer the agenda.
I have to go on, have executive session. Okay. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All oppose, same sign. Okay, now, do I have a motion to approve the amended agenda? I have a motion from Alderman Headley to approve the amended agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Totten. Any discussion on the amended agenda? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All oppose, same sign. Agenda is amended. Next item on the agenda is participation. We ask that you come forward to the podium and address the board. Please take your name and address for the record. Do I have any citizens wishing to address the board this evening? Seeing none, close that portion. Move on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
We accept consent agenda.
Okay, a motion from Alderman Scully to approve the consent agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Totten. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All oppose, same sign. Seeing no proclamations, presentations, public hearings, or previous business or new business. We'll move on to ordinances.
Wonder if you 11-52 too? You wanted to go ahead and introduce us?
Okay.
And then I have some time to make it. I just jumped again.
Bill B. 11-52, an ordinance amending section 340.190, emergency conditions of the City of Green Valley, Missouri municipal code. Second reading, it will be ordinance 2177.
The board may recall that at our prior meeting two weeks ago, there was some conversation regarding the emergency snow route versus the route that's used for emergency vehicles, and there is a clear distinction between the two. I think there was a little bit of confusion thinking that they were one and the same. In this situation, the emergency snow route is delineated with signage that states that it's a snow route, so that we're assured to let our citizens know when that occurs that only one side of the road can be parked on, so that we can be sure to clear those roads for snow removal. In the situation that Alderman, need be discussed, is there are roads within the area that Chief Amber has referred to that are more used for a, as a route for emergency vehicles. And so, that's the delineation between the two, and I just wanted to clear that up a little bit. The amounts that Brian gave to you last, or two weeks ago at our last meeting, are the same as what you have in your packets this evening.
I move that we accept number, or bill number B. 11-52 for a second reading and making it ordinance 2177.
I have a motion from Alderman Scully to accept Bill 11-52 for its second reading, making ordinance 2177. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Totten. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All oppose, same sign.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Headley?
Yes.
Scully?
Yes.
BB?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Totten?
Yes.
Bill B. 11-53, second reading, it will be ordinance 2178, which is an ordinance authorizing and directing the issuance, sale, and delivery of $5.235 million principal amount of general obligation bond series 2011, City of Green Valley, Missouri, and authorizing certain other documents and actions in connection therewith. Second reading, ordinance 2178.
Mayor, I move.
I have a quick comment for this evening, excuse me, Alderman Headley. Under B. 11-53, this is the ordinance that authorizes the $5.235,000 principal amount for general obligation bonds. Tom Calico from Springsteen is here. There are two slight changes within the ordinance for this item this evening. He's here to speak to those items. You should have those items redlined within your guide, this attachment should be redlined. I'll show you what those changes are.
Thank you. I want to stress, there are two, basically two changes to the language of the ordinance, but there's no change to the intention. So, everything that we spoke about two weeks ago is still the same. The two changes are, one is we've changed the, saying that the principal amount of bonds would be $5.235,000. Let's see if the language has been changed in many places to say that the amount of the bonds will not exceed $5.235,000. Why is that? The reason that's been changed is that in all likelihood, we will end up somewhere a few thousand to maybe even 10,000 or so thousand below that number, just by the way the math is going to work out. So, in order to be accurate, instead of saying it will be $5.235,000, it's more accurate to say it will not exceed that amount. And of course, the magic to that number, if you recall, is the $5.235,000, is the remaining general obligation authority from the 2007 referendum. The other change in here is addressing the optional call feature. As you may recall, optional call feature is on a municipal bond is where the municipality can, after a certain period of time, basically refinance the bonds. The intention, as I described to you last time I was here, is that we are going to try and get an optional call feature on these bonds, that because these are capital appreciation bonds, we are, we're going into it knowing that may be difficult and may be expensive. And you remember when I talked about last time, we said that essentially, if we couldn't get it done in a reasonable cost, and one that meets the parameter of the interest rate that's in this ordinance, then we won't do it. If we get, so if we get an optional call at a reasonable cost, we'll do it. If we can't, then the bonds will have, will not have an optional call. So, that intention is still the same, but we've changed the language here to make that a bit, a bit more straightforward to administer. Any questions on that? If those are the only, the only real changes, the rest are all just, you know, our script, scripters, you know, anything else?
Thank you.
Mayor, I move we accept Bill 11-53 for its second reading, making it ordinance number 2178.
I have a motion from Alderman Headley to approve Bill 11-53 for its second reading, making it ordinance 2178. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Totten. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All oppose, same sign.
BB?
Yes.
Scully?
Yes.
Totten?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Headley?
Yes.
Bill B. 11-56, first reading, ordinance adopting the revised version of the 2011-2012 City of Green Valley employee handbook. First reading, Bill B. 11-56.
I move that we accept Bill B. 11-56 for its first reading and bring it back for its second reading by Title One.
I have a motion from Auburn West to approve Bill 11-56 for its first reading, bring it back by Title One for its second reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Scully. Any discussion?
As an introduction to the board, if you please, there are four items that we introduced to you in a memo two weeks ago at our last meeting that discussed these items. They are within your packet. Jamie Rinsmeyer, your city clerk, is here to speak to these items if you would like additional information and clarification.
Board, just to highlight the points that we are changing in the handbook, most of them are clerical changes, however, I would like to highlight them so you're aware. On page 80 of the handbook, the amount of hours necessary for an individual to be considered a full-time employee and to receive benefits from the city will be 40 hours per week. It had previously been less than that, and so, we need to change that to 40 hours per week, so everybody has the same type of benefits and the same authority to get those benefits. Also, on page 80, the amount of hours necessary to be considered a part-time employee, again, relates to the changes of hours, except for loggers. Again, that's just another clerical change that we need to make on those, those numbers. If you look at the third point on the memo, the handbook as it reads now, it's in relation to our police department staff, their hours are different than a majority of our employees, and the holiday pay that we pay our employees for a holiday that's given to just a general staff is eight hours of regular pay. When a police officer, for example, works on a holiday, if they're paid for that day and they also were to be paid for a holiday, they would be getting paid double time. In reviewing the policy, that's obviously not the intention of the city to do that, to pay them double time, so they will be paid overtime for a two-week pay period of 88 hours as opposed to 80 hours. That's been confusing, so if you have any questions, please, please ask. Last, on page 141 of the handbook, is in regards to jury duty. The compensation, as we all know, for being a juror isn't much. As the handbook read, it stated that an individual would get compensated minus the pay that they received as a juror. The city has decided, upon your approval, to allow them to have that pay as a juror and then just get paid their regular salary on top of that. So, those are the changes that we have, that we have asked you to consider this evening, and I would be more than happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All oppose, same sign.
Six zero, first, the second reading, Bill B. 11-56, it will be ordinance 2179, ordinance adopting the revised version of the 2011-2012 City of Green Valley employee handbook. Second reading, ordinance 2179.
I move that we accept Bill B. 11-56, making it ordinance number 2179.
I have a motion from Auburn, Auburn West to approve Bill 11-56 for its second reading, making it ordinance 2179. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Scully. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All oppose, same sign.
West? Schaefer?
Yes.
Headley?
Yes.
Totten?
Yes.
Scully?
Yes.
BB?
Yes.
Bill B. 11-57, an ordinance, first reading.
I move that we accept. I'm sorry.
An ordinance authorizing the city administrator to purchase a new live-scanned fingerprint machine, first reading. Thank you.
Okay, I'll add two cents, though. Everybody needs to know that this is a necessity because our...
Nancy, you need to hold out to the discussion.
Okay, but I want to tell them why I'm voting for it.
You need to read it first, because then you can...
Okay. I move that we accept bill number B. 11-57 for its first reading and making it...
Bring it back by Title One.
Bring it back, back by Title One. Thank you.
I have a motion from Alderman Totten to accept Bill 11-57 for its first reading, bring it back by Title One for its second reading. Do I have a second? Second, Alderman Headley. Any discussion?
Yes, I wanted to bring this forward so that people know that our FBI is not going to accept the ink print that is done now, and it's all got to be electronic, and that's why this is a necessity, so that the people understood that this is done because it's a act. Thank you.
I couldn't have said it better myself.
There you go.
Was this B. 11-51 or 57?
57. We removed 51 off the agenda, it's 57. Any additional discussion or questions?
So, we have no alternative, Chief. This is, this is what it's got to be.
Right. Our only alternative is if we didn't get with this because of our current unit that we're utilizing is very unquited, as I explained in the ordinance. So, the upgrades are becoming obsolete for it, and if we don't do this, basically, we would have to try to contract with either the state, Jackson County Sheriff's Department, or another agency around those Blue Springs, or somebody that does have this system. Anytime we needed to get somebody fingerprinted, which we fingerprint basically everybody that we arrest unless they're already on file with us with fingerprints or somebody else. So, it would become an issue for that, and then, of course, that, we have to get into a contract and all that good stuff. And we do utilize our fingerprinting technologies for fingerprinting general public as well. We do make a small revenue from that with teachers, different federal jobs and stuff that require fingerprints, and people living town do come here and we do fingerprint people for a nominal fee, so.
You're fingerprinting our children. Is there a fee for that if we want to bring them up and get fingerprints?
Yeah, anytime we're utilizing anything like that. We do have separate, separate things that we, we work with, like local insurance agencies and stuff like that, at different events like Nine Island Prime, and they provide fingerprint, fingerprint kits and whatnot. Generally, if we're going to fingerprint kids, we're arresting them. You know, there are children that we do have on file, unfortunately, but, yeah. And another question that was asked me was about the technology. Currently, we're operating on a Windows 2000. The models that are out there now, since ours is about eight years old, they're operating on Windows Professional, and the certificate process to get this, the technology upgraded is very extenuous and laborsome to this, to the company, and right now, they're working with Windows 7 and trying to get that past through all the red tape and everything that comes with the federal government. So, they're hoping by April, when mandates are all set in place with the FBI, that they're going to add the upgrades with the Windows 7 capability with fingerprint machines, so.
Well, I just figured they should understand that this is a necessity. You're not just out blowing our money.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
It's been, it's been budgeted last year.
Yes, sir. Yeah, yeah, we, it is, it is currently in the budget. This is something that we're adding, it was in with the capital.
Thank you, Chiefs. Anything else? Seeing no more, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All oppose, same sign.
Six zero, first reading, Mayor. Resolution R. 11-21, which is a resolution by the Board of Alderman, City of Green Valley, to adopt a vehicle and equipment replacement plan. The acronym was ERP.
Mayor, I move that we accept Resolution B. 11-21 for its first reading.
I have a motion from Alderman Schaefer to approve Resolution R. 11-21. Do I have a second? Second, Alderman West. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye. All oppose, same sign.
Six zero, Mayor. That's all we have on ordinances and resolutions.
Next item, city attorney's reports?
Nothing to report, Your Honor.
Next item, city military staff reports?
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, I just wanted to update you quickly on the interchange project. We've had some things over the last couple of weeks that have, some milestones that we've hit that are moving the project forward. First off, we have new project managers, names Jeff Hardy, there's been a lot of changes at ODOT, they've had quite the shakeup with personnel, so this is along with a new district engineer and a new assistant district engineer. Hopefully, this will be the last change to our project team, but we met with him, he is as proactive and wants his project as bad as the city does. So, today, we also received a letter of no further action. Department of Natural Resources cleared all the ground that Mr. O'Reilly owns because they had that tank removal and they had to remediate some of the ground storage water contamination. So, we received that, that's another thing we've been waiting on for about seven months now, actually. Both projects are going to be on a May letting, so they will be bid out in May of 2012 with the projects getting started at the end of June. Additionally, they've also issued what's called an A date. It's an acquisition date. That's kind of the first step in actually getting this project going. Now, they can go out and approach property owners and begin to make offers on all the different properties that we need to acquire for the ride away. They will be making their first offers on December 15th. So, that's all the information I have about it, but I wanted to give you an update. I know you haven't heard about the project for quite some time, so that's where we're at.
Mayor, board, real quick, I just wanted to update you, two weekends ago, we did have the event out at the pavilion there with the vets, the Veterans Oktoberfest, and my officer, James Beal, is one that worked with the vet center as well as the VA downtown to help coordinate that event. I was there for a few hours of it, it was a really, really great event. I heard they had about 200, 250 people pass through altogether. They provided excellent information there. We had numerous DFW posts, as well as American Legion representation out there, we had sheriff's department, we had several other people out there, they had excellent food, and guest speaker was a gentleman by the name of Mr. Ballard, Colonel Ballard, retired Navy officer who actually lives in Great Valley, was a Medal of Honor recipient, awesome speaker. I actually did not, was unable to see the speech, but I heard he did an excellent job.
He did an excellent job.
Yeah, and just kind of one of those hometown treasures, so, and I did, was able to visit him for quite some time, so very interesting gentleman, gave a good chance to try to get to know him. Also, as well, I do have some numbers back for Shorthorn area for the speed that we set up the sign, and as well as Headwood Red Bud. So, if anybody wants to get with me, I can share that now if you want, or I can get with you after the meeting and give you those numbers and percentages and all that good stuff.
Are those the little signs that they're monitoring? Is that what you're actually doing, or that's what they do, right?
Yeah, that, that's just different, it's not the big box unit, that's actually a sign that we hang at the post.
And that's what statistics you have?
Mm-hmm. On speeds and the number of vehicles and all the good, good things like that.
Because somebody asked me if there would be a monitor, that was...
Those are going to get tickets in the mail. No, just kidding.
That's what I told them. Thanks, Eric.
You bet. Thank you.
The only thing we have to do on finance is we did go out for bids for our new audit firm for next two, three years with an additional expansion, extensions of one year, and Wednesday, we're going to have interviews here at the chamber, or the council chambers for those auditors that responded.
I have two items for the board this evening. The first one, I want to let you know that staff is in the middle of the budget process. I'm going to be coming back to you very shortly to find out some dates that you might be available, that we can start some workshop sessions, so we can start going over the budget. I'm looking probably around the second week of November to be able to start that. More to come on that later, staff trying to work out, you know, account, or charted accounts that Kathy's put together. She's done an awesome job, she's been thrown into a lot this year, and Mike, we're starting to do a great job. The last thing that I have for the board tonight is the safety fair that was held by the employees on Friday afternoon and midday. It was a great event, had a great turnout, and I'm just so proud of everybody for participating.
Okay, next item, as a part of all our reports and comments, Auburn Schaefer?
Nothing at this time, Mayor.
Auburn Totten?
Well, I do wanna compliment what a wonderful job the officers did do that were there, and the food was fantastic. The veterans were very informative and brought to the attention how some of the different wars that our young men have been in are not really recognized. And one of the gentlemen went and got me a ribbon because I have a grandson in Iraq right now. And now I have an Iraqi wore a ribbon on my front door since they gave it to me. But they were very informative, they were playing baseball, the kids were having fun. I really had a great time, that'd be all I was up there.
Yeah, I think that, that was kind of one of, the first time they'd like to make this an annual event.
Yeah.
Auburn Scully?
Nothing at this time, Mayor.
Auburn Headley?
Just curious about those numbers on the, the Red Bud.
Do you want me to try again?
Well, good. Deal with you afterwards.
Okay.
There are several people that are very interested in those numbers, so.
Auburn West?
Uh, just one thing, Mayor. I had an opportunity to attend this, the safety fair and was very impressed. And it also gave me an opportunity to meet some more, more of the city employees. I appreciate it. Very nice.
Auburn Beebe?
None, just got a matter, thank you.
Uh, Mayor's report, just one thing. I will be meeting with Senator Kraus here in November to discuss issues pertinent to, like, Grand Val, Grand Valley, just cities in general for the upcoming legislative session. So, if anybody has anything they want me to discuss with them, please let me know, and I'll be sure to pass that along to him, and he can work on it in Jefferson City for us, so. Uh, that is all I have. I believe we do have a need for executive session for legal actions.
That's correct.
Okay.
I would entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session for legal actions, causes of action litigation, pursuant to section six one zero point zero two.
I move that we go into exec for legal action.
Okay, now, motion from Auburn Scully to adjourn to executive session. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Auburn Headley. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye. All close, same sign. All right, we're adjourned to executive.
Make sure we show out some.
Well, I got over on dress by.
And I got, I've got three names.
We had there for a period.
I think I'm gonna do my second, so remember my second. No, it has gotten a lot of stuff.
Yes. We have a total of one thousand nine hundred and seventy.
Spike would be one to five thirty on Tuesday.